Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Fraser. Wees.
Here.
Adi.
Here.
Elder.
Yep.
Leibel.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Sleek.
Here.
Okay, council has a copy of the minutes and I believe we all have a copy of the minutes, don't we? Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? No? We also have the agenda for the tonight. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Madam President, I move to excuse Mr. Seth Fraser.
We've got to do that after.
Afterwards.
So if there's no additions to the agenda.
Oh.
We'll continue. Okay, now you can do that.
All right. Madam President, I move to excuse Mr. Seth Fraser.
Second.
Roll call.
Wees.
Yes.
Adi.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Leibel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Sleek.
Yes.
Okay, Danny's going to take, or the mayor is going to take the floor.
Sorry.
Right now. Go ahead.
Danny is just fine. Thank you, Madam President. First off, I'd like to welcome members of the public to tonight's city council meeting. Thank you all for joining us. Many of you may have seen that Croker Street has been under significant infrastructure changes for some time. Mr. Randall Duncan, we asked you to come down tonight. If you could step up here with me for a second. Mr. Duncan has been the project manager. You're okay. He's been the project. Well, you can stay right there. He's been the project manager on the project. You know, Councilwoman Haverford, I understand that you've worked right across the street, so you've watched this project from.
And they're doing a fabulous job. It's a little noisy, but you know, what are you going to do?
So this is the gentleman that you called me with the complaint about. I thought we might as well bring him to the council meeting and give him an opportunity to defend himself. I know you've had some questions. Are there any council members that have any questions on the project?
When do we expect to do that?
We're shooting for June 1st and we're working hard for that date. Obviously, you know, everybody's, this has been painful for everybody down there, so we are still optimistic that we're going to be at June 1st.
So, thank you. I received a letter that I wanted to read that was on March 22nd. It says, Dear Mayor, recently as I was across Croker Street by the library, a city worker with the name Randall on his jacket asked if he could help me. As I tried to hold my walker, I told him I would be grateful for his help. He not only walked me across to SRS to pay my taxes, but he helped me up and down small steps and then walked me back across the street to my car. He certainly went out of his way to make sure I was safe. I have thought so often of his friendliness and kindness. Sincerely, J. M. Dedman. So Randall, the real reason why you're here tonight is to recognize you for what I would call your next level of public service. We have anywhere, I'm going to say somewhere over 100 employees throughout the city. And if you ask any employee inside the city, I think Randall, they all have something good to say about you. About a year and a half ago, Chief Wensinger came up with the phrase "next level of public service." And it's something that we've tried to institute throughout the entire city over the last year and a half. So I want to publicly thank Randall Duncan for his next level of public service and provide him with a certificate of appreciation from the City of Fremont. Mr. Duncan, I'd like to thank you for your public service commitment and I'm sorry that we brought you down here.
All right.
Question or comment on Mr. Duncan? I was just wondering, Randall, when you walked them across the street in such, how much time do you think that took you?
Uh, no way. Not real sure what that was.
Again, I worked with Randall on some phone calls while this project was getting started. He was nothing but fantastic and out of his way for everything he was dealing up around St. Joe and that area and all the other questions people had. So, great job.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Madam President, if you, I would like to invite Sharie Mullin out to give an update on the Community of Excellence. There are many community members that are here tonight that have been part of this process for a long time. I'd also like to publicly thank them on behalf of myself and my administration for all the time and effort that each and every one of you have put in to helping the city as a community move forward with Community of Excellence. I also like to specifically thank Sharie Mullin, who has been a fantastic leader of Community of Excellence and has spent a lot of time working with a lot of community leaders, really. She's been the one behind driving this with a lot of the other leaders in our city, so I want to thank her and introduce her to the council tonight.
Good evening, Madam President, and the council to the public. I would like to first thank Mayor Sanchez for the opportunity to lead and facilitate this program, Greater Fremont. I would like to thank Amanda Sears for supporting me in the back, but she'll be flipping through the slides for us. And I would like to thank the team members of Greater Fremont, if you will please stand, that are here tonight that will participate in this presentation. Team members from Greater Fremont, which is lovely to recognize. Thank you. So as we begin the presentation, Councilwoman Paul, two years ago, April of 2022, when I came before you with Chromatica and we started talking about communities of excellence and the program that we were starting on a journey to improve the performance of our community. We were here, I believe it was April 7th of 2022. So now, two years later, we're here to give a final update to where we're at and what the next steps looks like for the community of excellence known as Greater Fremont. Next slide. So as we get started, I'm going to give a community overview. We're going to talk about the history and the characteristics of Fremont. We're going to explain for yourself and for the public a little bit about what the community of excellence is and then what Greater Fremont is. Three-part series in this presentation tonight. So, with the history of our community, Fremont, Ohio, known, been put on the map. We're home of the 19th president, Rupert B. Hayes. We're a big agricultural community, where we plant seed to bring food to the table of others across America. That's our rich roots. We have a historical river that runs up and down Fremont, and our community has been rooted in its conditions and its values for a very long time. So when we came together to look at this, we wanted to look at our community offerings. And the community offerings that we have here in Greater Fremont are, we have a vibrant historical downtown with a lot of activity, a healthcare system, an educational system, plenty of educational options. And I would like to note that we have a community college that has a residential dorm. Most community colleges don't have that, but we have that right here in our backyard. Tourist attractions, government and county agencies, social service agencies, civic organizations, and community programs. And all of these programs and services are here for what I call the journey of good for Fremont, Ohio. So when you look at our community demographics, this is where the leaders that I work together to look at what is Greater Fremont or what is Fremont. So when you look at our graphics, you can bring it over. You look at the metrics, I'm going to compare Fremont, Ohio to Tiffin, Ohio, Defiance, Ohio, Greater Fremont to Sandusky, Ohio. So when you look at our population total, Fremont, Ohio is 15,825 individuals. And you look across the Tiffin, 17,765, Defiance, 16,990. Greater Fremont, which includes the townships, Greater Fremont 43420, has a population of 29,257 residents, which mirrors or close to Sandusky, Ohio. So we look at some of the demographics, we're looking at the total population, the change in population that we've seen since 2000. If you look at Fremont, Ohio, since 2000, it's been 8.9%. Tiffin, Ohio, 2%. And you look at Defiance, a plus of 3%. And you look at Greater Fremont, there's been an 8.8% decline in the population. We are also looking at the percentage of homeowners. In Fremont, Ohio, 55.9% of our residents own homes that they live in. If you look at Tiffin and Defiance, 68%, 67%. When we look at our median house or condo value in Fremont, Ohio, is $124,000. Look at Tiffin, Ohio, and Defiance, Ohio, 137, roughly to 151. So there's other metrics and data points that we're looking at to look at our community and what can we do to improve the performance of our community. Next slide. An important demographic here, when you look at our populations, it's our population of minority and non-minority. In Greater Fremont, we have seen an increase over the last 10 years from 2010 to 2020. We are 29.2% minority. That's in Fremont, Ohio. When we look at Greater Fremont, we are 23.7% minority. So our minority population mirrors that of Sandusky, Ohio, or close to. So as we get together, we talked about what can we do to leverage what we have in Fremont, Ohio to continue to move forward and to be a role model community for other communities in Northwest Ohio and throughout the state. So we selected the Community of Excellence program, Community of Excellence 2026. So a little bit about Community of Excellence, it's a nonprofit organization that is based in San Diego, California. The Community of Excellence currently right now has 26 communities participating at a national level. You'll be able to see Greater Fremont there with a population that at the end time we reported was 27,000 individuals. There are other smaller communities that are part of the Community of Excellence, but the majority, as you can see, are your major urban areas. And I would like to note to council and to the public that Greater Fremont is a known community to watch after, to pattern after our processes. So we have something to be very proud of. We are noted across America as being a community that has the ability to collaborate together with inclusive collaboration. So that is one thing that we stand out amongst all those communities that are listed there. Next slide, please. So we use the Community of Excellence framework, which I have right here. And the framework, it's adopted from the Ballrich Excellence Framework. If anyone is familiar with Malcolm Ballrich, that framework comes out of the United States Department of Commerce. It's similar to Six Sigma and LEED, but it is a framework to help you improve the performance of your community. It's revised every two years with expert input on leading-edge practices for communities. It's a multi-system level approach to help improve outcomes and improve community resilience. Most importantly, it's rooted in the belief that all residents in America should have the opportunity to thrive. And it focuses on economic vitality, educational achievement, housing, the health status, and social conditions of a community. So within the framework, we use the community profile. And on the community profile, there are seven domains that we look at. Across those domains, we look at leadership, we look at the leaders in our community, how are we leading and how can we lead together in the system? We look at our strategy, the residents and stakeholders, our people resources that are helping us, the operations, and most importantly, the results. And today, the team will discuss the results of Greater Fremont. We use a roundtable, so how do you get involved with Greater Fremont? Per the curriculum, we use what we call this community roundtable. And it talks about different sectors that you should bring together in the community to help you with your community work. So I believe you do have a roundtable in front of you. You would look at it and you would see health, economics, education, housing, quality of life, and just to name a few, city and county government, youth organizations, faith-based organizations, adult and senior organizations, arts, culture, and entertainment, clubs, services, and other organizations. So this is all about a part of the framework that helps guide us in our approach. One piece of the framework that we use is called High Steps to Performance. And this is one of my favorite parts of the framework. So it starts off with taking your community or your organization from being reactive. Reactive doesn't mean that anything was wrong, but we want to have, we want to have processes versus activities. We have a lot of activities going on, but do we have processes that actually structure how we do those activities? And it's taking away from responding to immediate needs, similar to COVID, right? We had a lot of activities going on, then we had COVID, so now we have to respond because something has, new has come into the community or come across America. We went into developing, that's when we began to align, so we create shared operations, repeatable processes, an evaluation and improvement plan, and strategy and quantitative goals are defined. And then into align, again, we're all lined up, repeating our processes, regularly evaluating our improvements, shared learning. And we're working into fully integrated, where this just becomes a part of our community with those repeatable processes, evaluations for change and improvement, collaboration with the community, and shared learning. So why are we embarking on a journey together? This is a systems approach that starts off with one C, knowing the current story of our community, who we are. We did that with the demographics. And then believing, envisioning a future story of our community, the future direction where we would like to take our community together. So we talk about a multi-stakeholder system, that's one of my favorite words and theories I like to use right now. It's collaborative governance, Virginia. It's when multiple people get together and they govern in a multi-stakeholder system. Where all have a say of the direction in which way their community is going. And then at the end, doing, that's what we've been doing, taking action, creating a new story for our community in the direction that we're going. So with that said, I would like to introduce you to Greater Fremont and explain what we're doing and how we use the format. Welcome to Greater Fremont. We're team members from multiple industries.
Community sectors and resident groups are setting out on a journey to bring people together and build a community of excellence for the future.
Together, we strive to improve our community's outcomes related to health and wellness, educational attainment, economic vitality, equity and inclusion, along with overall quality of life.
Today, your feedback about our community will help guide the efforts of the volunteers participating in Communities of Excellence 2026 initiatives.
So please check out the survey on Greater Fremont.
And share your voice.
We need your feedback.
Follow the link to take the survey.
Everyone has a voice.
Greater Fremont needs your voice.
Take the survey and shape the future.
So that was a social media campaign that we pushed out through multiple social media websites, February 5th through March 5th. And we continuously keep that on the website because we are looking to hear the feedback of our community to help shape our future. And I'll talk about that a little more towards the end of the presentation. So if you look at all those who are involved in Greater Fremont, we have the City of Fremont and Chromatica Hospital, which are the co-backboard organizations. A backbone organization primarily means that you orchestrate, lead, and facilitate the program. The Board of Mental Health Recovery Services, Sandusky County, Downtown Fremont E, Fremont City School District, Great Lakes Community Action Partnership, Sandusky County Chamber of Commerce, Sandusky County Family and Children's First Council, Sandusky County Health Department, Sandusky County Habitat for Humanities, Sandusky County Job and Family Services, Sandusky County Economic Development, United Way of Sandusky County, and TERRA State Community College. So when we all came together using that framework and envisioning our new story, we created a mission, vision, and a strategic position statement. So our mission for Greater Fremont is to create an engaged, inclusive community where all people want to work, live, shop, and play. And our vision, simply put, is where people come first. Our strategic position statement is to increase the awareness of all resources available to all segments of the population in Greater Fremont. Our values that we hold to are providing access, offering opportunities, developing partnerships, inspiring positive attitudes, and advancing equity and inclusion. We do this through five domains, health and wellness, economic and workforce development, education, quality of life, and equity and inclusion. So you may ask, how did you come up with these domains and your objectives? They all come from residential surveys, residential surveys that are done by GELCAP, Great Lakes Community Action Partnership, and from the CHIPS survey, the health department survey. So we looked at all the feedback and determined what our five objectives or starting points were going to be. So now I would like to invite John Detwiler, companion, to talk about our education.
Go ahead, Tom. I wouldn't want to do it anyway. Got you covered. Good evening, everyone. All right, we, we, we've really been working on what should we work on as a district. It seems that, and if you can see this across the state, academically, since COVID, most schools have started to recover academically. But the things we're really struggling with are attendance and graduation rate. Those two things seem to really be sticking. We can't seem to shake after COVID. So one thing that we thought would be important is graduation rate. Now, kind of working backwards, we thought, well, let's attack it really with students who can connect to employer, employment opportunities. So for our domain, we said, well, we'll provide students with assistance with resume writing, job application completions, interview experience, and youth science assessment. See Beth Hanam here, and the youth science is actually a tool that we got from the Business Advisory Council that helps students identify not their interests, but their aptitude. What are you good at? Not just, well, I like to work this thing, whatever, like work with my hands, I like whatever. No, what are you good at? And then try to steer them into that. And one thing that we've done with that is something called Lunch with Giants. So for example, two weeks ago, Crown Battery came in and talked about interviewing skills for the students who would meet during their own lunchtime. Motion Control Robotics was there and talked about what that takes for them to be successful in their jobs. And we're matching them up. Another thing that we're doing is, if you ever go into the middle school, you'll see banners from all the companies in, not all the companies, excuse me, but about nine of the companies in town. Those companies have adopted a grade-level team, given those teachers, often T-shirts that say the company's name on them, then come and meet with those teachers and those teams of kids and talk about what it takes to be successful in that area. But all that is tied up in with our goal, basically, to get them education rate back up. About a week ago, if you heard the state of the state from the governor, one thing that you may rev up in education is a more rigorous connection to careers for students coming out of high school. I think it's a very good idea. You know, we do an awful lot about, you know, seals and trying to get skills for kids for job placement. But the governor's plan is to try to get that, okay, let's make that even more formal, so that statewide, there'll be a plan for every stock student as they graduate to be on a pathway for a career. So moving on with some of other stuff, I know I only got a couple minutes left. How am I going to share it? Okay. All right. We talked about our graduation rate, and I don't know if we have comparison with the other districts on the slide, but unfortunately, well, with Fremont City Schools and Tiffin City Schools, right at 89%, not really what it used to be. It would be about 94, 95%. And we're trying to figure out what are the contributing factors to that? There has never been more opportunities for a student to get education in a different way. There are more charter schools, online schools, a lot more homeschoolers than there used to be. It has really exploded in the state. And that, that's a good thing for a lot of families, but it also creates some challenges. And one of those things is the changing expectations in all those districts. One thing that we have found in Fremont City Schools is sometimes kids maybe struggle and they go to another school, don't do very well, and come back, and they're even farther behind than they were before. So that's been kind of a challenge for us as well. But that's one thing that we've been trying to do, is recognize that there are a lot of different options for kids and we have to compete. Another thing we asked was, as of today, do you have the opportunities to get the education needed to be successful for your dream job? The survey that Sharie just put up there, that was a question that we ask educationally. I want to say that again. Can you get the education you would need to be successful in your dream job? What we thought that would do is if citizens have the feeling that they, if they really wanted this job, is there a resource in the community to get them there? And we had 240 completed surveys and 167 of those 244 said they believe that to be true, which is a super majority of people thought. And if you think about, we have programs at TERRA, we have a very strong Vanguard program, we have all kinds of opportunities in our community for people to succeed. Also, Ross High School, I believe we have one of the most comprehensive programs in the area. You can still take a woods class, for example. We have cooking classes. We have things that we can offer that a lot of districts don't. So there are opportunities, we think, educationally, but if we can improve those and keep those going, we'll be better off. Some of the challenges and advantages to the education sector in Fremont, we thought a positive was the community collaboration. I think this has been a great part of that. Someone mentioned the family shirt in the first council. Every time I go there, I just come away thinking, man, what a team surrounding all the resources that we have for our population. We believe our diversity is a strength for us and that all students are welcome in Fremont. We have programs trying to grow our own staff and within, where we have non-certified staff members who can work towards their teaching certification in order to be teachers in our district. Once again, the variety of offerings, the challenges of professional development, more educational opportunities, and then ultimately, an improved graduation rate. So I don't know if I'm going to take any questions, Sharie, keep on. Okay. That's it for now. If you have any questions, I'll be around.
Close the questions in your parking lot.
Right, there you go.
Why does education matter? Well, education matters in this community of excellence to make sure that all of our residents, K through 12 residents, have an opportunity to succeed once they graduate from school for economic vitality. So thank you to our educational team and those that are a part of that and those in the community that are looking to be a part. These are also opportunities where you can join us to help with the community forward. So, to the next slide. Have a representative from the economic and workforce.
Are you standing?
I can turn it right here because it's right there.
So myself and Beth Hanam from Sandusky County Economic Development, this component of our Community of Excellence program, we've kind of relied on some of the information that we learned from our manufacturing community. And so what we've discovered is we have a shrinking workforce. And that is in line with one of the concerns we have with a shrinking population. It's pretty simple to figure out, you don't have a shrinking workforce. And so what we've tried to do in kind of, you know, and these are in line with the city's Fremont plan that we came up years ago, is, you know, what can we do as a community to kind of reverse that population decline? And so the amenities that people maybe wanted in the community, an amphitheater, you know, this play part, working with our partners and, and so we've focused in on housing. And so housing, we think, kind of helps address two things. One, the shrinking population, and then the shrinking workforce. If we create this industrial park and we want to fill it up with companies, those companies are going to need workforce, and that workforce needs somewhere to live. And so we've identified and kind of, and honestly, through this process, we've learned gaps in the system that there's no, we did not have a good way to track housing. You know, we have a tax payment, so we're trying to track it that way. We have a building permit system, but sometimes depending, you know, whether you're the township or the city, we may not, you know, look up for the track. And so through all that, we have found a systematic way of being able to track housing from year to year. And through that housing, figure out the location, the value of the home, the price points that are selling. And it's all done to kind of drive the workforce. If we're going to track business here, we have to have a vibrant community where there are subdivisions, where there's investment being done and that, hey, here is a community that if I buy this industrial land here, there's other development, residential development going on so that, you know, I can, you know, there's a workforce I can tap into. So between myself and Beth and the rest of our team, that's one of the metrics that we have zeroed in on is housing and workforce, workforce development and housing, if we can improve housing, increase housing. And when we've seen that in some of the housing, through this process, we've seen people buy houses, rent houses, and move here because those developments aren't happening in other communities. In fact, there's an organization called Northwest Ohio Regional Economic Development. It's a group of economic development practitioners. And Beth Hanam from Sandusky County is this year's president of that group. And they had just had an annual meeting last week. And they had just had an annual meeting last week and the hot button topic, uh, for the keynote speakers and the panel were, were housing. What are other communities doing for housing? Is housing is a crisis for a lot of communities? It's an issue for a lot of communities and really is borderline crisis for a lot of, uh, for not just Fremont. So, um, that's kind of our, uh, you know, wheelhouse as we move forward over the next couple of years with Community of Excellence is, is promote housing, drive housing, recruit housing, uh, you know, along with that. Uh, I don't know if I should have been doing this because I probably wasn't paying the best attention, but as people were talking, they were talking about, well, this is who we got to build houses in our community. And I was like, okay, oh, they build apartments? Okay, okay. You know, and, and we've talked, you know, the other thing that we've tried to talk to and we hear this a lot is that we need affordable housing and we need apartments and, and we agree, the city agrees with that and we are working on it, but that is a bigger lift than you think because, uh, there aren't, uh, a lot of communities that, you know, there aren't a lot out there that build apartments. There aren't a lot out there that fully understand, uh, the government's tax credit. And so when, you know, developers want those tax credits to build homes, uh, it's a pretty strict, narrow guideline to access those tax credits from, you know, you would, you know, and we've learned this experiences, uh, if you take tax credits to build, you know, affordable housing, the government tells you where to build that house based on your load of moderate income neighborhoods and you can put it here, but you can't put it here. And so the trick is it's a really complicated math equation. Developer, land, make sure the land's in the right place, and that's just the starting point. That's a tough math equation, but it's something we're hoping through with Community of Excellence and our work and what we do that, uh, you know, address all housing, but kind of zero in on, uh, some affordable housing.
Thank you. So my education, why housing, all for economic development to make sure that all of our residents have the opportunity to thrive and now to make sure they have an opportunity to thrive in a safe neighborhood. And this is our next domain, equity and inclusion. I would like to thank you.
Um, our domain area is equity and inclusion, and, um, I'm just the speaker, but I also want to thank Erica Williams and Cody Dishoff, um, city employees that do the heavy lifting, I think. Um, we, our metric that we're looking at is zoning violations. Um, and this is really just keying in on if someone feels that their neighborhood is safe and it's well taken care of, that they are, you know, inclusive in their community and it really ties into all the other areas. Um, and so we are very excited to report that the zoning violations are trending in the way we want them to, which is there are less violations. Um, and we're looking to get some comparable data with the other communities that Shari highlighted at the beginning of her presentation. Um, and this is really a, a community effort. Um, I'm the executive director for Habitat for Humanity and we're looking at some ways that we can, um, more fully serve the community aside from just affordable housing. Um, there's also things like the citywide free dumpster. Uh, United Way recently did a day of caring where they went out and helped create leaves and things like that. So we're very excited that this area, it's already trending down and we know that there's some great collaboration coming in the community soon that will just, um, better highlight and create an opportunity for everyone to feel, um, inclusive and to then be able to focus on some of the other areas in the community of excellence.
Thank you.
How about right on? Nice and short.
Thank you. Then our next domain would be health and wellness.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. I'm Bethany Brown, Health Commissioner for Sandusky County. And as part of this group, we really do take a look at our health data now to have affordable housing, um, and have, um, education and the equity that all kind of boils into our community health assessment that we do. Um, we really take a look at the social determinants of health, um, which encompasses all of that. So for this metric, we are looking at our access to healthcare providers. Um, and we know our healthcare providers are aging out, they're retiring. Um, we know that some of them are going to be doing that soon here, so we're going to have a shortage of physicians, um, in our community. And as the community health assessment, we really look at the whole county. So when we're in this group, we're, we're trying to focus in on that greater Fremont. Um, so our data is probably going to be a little skewed here because the ninety and the eighty-nine percent is for the whole county. So, um, when we did the survey that Shari put out, um, it shows that greater Fremont is at eighty-five percent of basically saying that you have a healthcare provider that you can go to, um, that you consider like your, your main provider. So that could be a nutritioner, it could be a physician. Um, so we, we're measuring that a little bit more closely now with the new survey that we have, but we usually put out the community health assessment every three years and we do that as health partners, which a lot of us sitting here in this group are also in health partners, um, which we pay for that survey to go out. So if you ever receive that survey, it's very important that you complete it, um, so we can get the data that we need, um, to be able to bring services here to our community. Um, I do want to mention also another one of our access to, to care issues in our community, specifically Fremont area is dental. Um, we have, um, our community health services here, which is our federal qualified health center. Um, they only have certain amount of dentists that are able to, um, help with our Medicaid, our low income families. And I think Joe said, um, who's the CEO, said that there's probably a 2,000 person waitlist at this point. Um, and we're really trying to see with this group as well as health partners of trying to get more dental, um, services within our community that is struggling. So, um, if you want, you can always go onto our website, the Health Department's website, and look at our community health, um, assessment data. There's lots of information in there that gives you a snapshot of our community. And really then we take that and do our community health improvement plan, um, which is where we do a lot of our strategies and pick our priorities. So, and access to care is a part of all of that.
And then we'll have our last domain, quality of life. Stacy Gibson. I would like to also mention that both Chief, Chief Hall, Chief Wenzinger have joined up on quality of life and will be looking at here soon, um, our emergency management plan and measuring, uh, the safety of our community.
I'm Stacy Gibson. I'm the Director of Family and Children First Council in, um, Sandusky County. Um, other members of the quality of life domain are Ruth Howe, Ruth Anne Howe from GLCAP, Jill Simpson with United Way, and Melanie Allen, Director of John Family Services. Um, we had very rich discussion at one of our meetings about what quality of life means because it means different things to different people. And I think a lot of, um, with Mr. Detwiler, Bethany and, and Pam and everyone speaking about their different domains, all of that integrates and is kind of married into what quality of life is. So for our domain, we, we chose to focus on like the financial, financial, um, self-sufficiency with quality of life. Um, so our goal is to increase the number of residents who are self-sufficient. Um, our community does a whole lot of great work when it comes to helping community members. Um, we have social service agencies that are trained in what we call no wrong door. So when, when a resident, say, goes to the health department and has a need, if it's not a health-related topic or need, they know who to make that call to, whether it's United Way to help them with, with services or supports, financial services or supports. So anywhere residents can go in the county, um, they can get linked up quickly through no wrong door. Um, what the strategy that we chose to focus on to help with, um, self-sufficiency is to promote GLCAP's Financial Opportunity Center. And what they do there is, um, assist with financial counseling, employment training, income support. Um, so they dive a little bit deeper than that just that, um, no wrong door. It's, it's, they, instead of just putting out fires, they kind of take it that step further and, and help those families get connected to those services that they need. Um, the, yeah, our, our data point is the opportunity center and we've kind of seen a gradual growth with a little hiccup with COVID there, um, because we all kind of had that little hiccup with COVID. Um, but, um, the Financial Literacy Center, or Financial Opportunity Center, um, helps folks with opening checking accounts, helps them understand their finances and, and what their credit score means. So it takes it that next step instead of just putting out that fire and referring them to housing or referring them to food stamps or, or medical assistance, um, it, it helps those families learn and then take that next step, so.
So our domain, our system domain, our systematic domain, all of it together. So our next steps, what does Community of Excellence, what does it do? What is the tangible? A lot of times I get that one. What is the tangible behind all this work? And I say the tangible are your residents, that when the residents have a quality of life and an opportunity to thrive, they can live in safe neighborhoods, in quality homes, access to education, access to doctors, they have overall health, and then they can feel better inside of their community. But other tangibles it will assist with, we have the great work done by the state Fremont Plan for Economic Development, but as we show that we're all working together across a system for social impact, it also positions us for more opportunities to support the economic development with housing, with other amenities that we bring into the community. So most key point, the outcomes are your residents having a quality of life and improving their quality of life. So that they have a wonderful day in our community. So our next steps, we want to increase the community stakeholder engagement. So we're looking towards council, to the members of the public, to folks that are watching our line, so please get involved. You can visit the Greater Fremont website at www.fremontohio.org under the resident tab, click on Greater Fremont, and there's a tab called Juvenile. If you've listened to all of this work, we have five domains. There's plenty of opportunity to help us move this community forward and we invite you all to be a part of that. If you fill out the online, um, request, I will contact and meet with you, talk about it in greater detail to see where you or your organization fits. You all should have received a roundtable, so we're looking for individuals a part of those organizations to join. And even if you're just an individual resident and you want to be a part, we can find something that you can help us make Fremont continue to make Fremont great. And then our continued improvement process. So we have already completed level one, the commitment to Community of Excellence. That was our first year. We committed to the journey together as a team. We completed level two, the journey to Community of Excellence. We have spent the last two and a half years on this journey. How do we get here? What are we measuring? What are the things that are important inside of our community? And now we are on the home stretch to level three, the Community of Excellence recognition. We are on target to turn in our application, let's do July 1 and we'll be recognized out of the United States Department of Commerce for our work in Fremont, Ohio. And I think that's something that we can all, our hands. Do you have any questions for, or questions for members that presented tonight in the individual domain? With that said, I would like to leave you with a quote, "The greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members," by Cora Scott. Thank you.
Okay. Now back to council.
If anybody wants to leave now, they certainly can.
Well, you'll miss the most exciting part.
Yeah.
Girls are getting big.
Okay. Ready, readings?
Yep.
Okay. Ready? First reading in ordinance authorizing the safety service directors to submit a written agreement to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation's annual winter road salt contract for 2024, 2025 in accordance with revised code section 551 3.01B and declaring an emergency.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to ask Mr. Goon, the Street Department Director, to just explain the salt contract. It's a yearly, uh, a yearly bid, is that correct, Mr. Goon?
It is a yearly bid and, and it's kind of a crapshoot because we don't really know what the price is going to be, but I assure you it's going to be lower than it's been in the past couple of years. Uh, last two years it's been forty-nine ninety-four a ton, which isn't horrible. I've seen it as low as thirty and I've seen it as high as a hundred and twenty. So we didn't use a whole lot of salt this year, about six hundred a ton. So, but it's Daniel, we just got that sent to us, I think it was last, last week. So ODAT doesn't wait around for us, they just kind of surprise us with, uh, I knew it was coming, Amanda and I usually handle it, so.
Is it recommended for us to make an motion to suspend Row Four on this to get this going or is this later? Yes. Okay, there, okay. I move to suspend Row Four.
Angie Reese moves to suspend Row Four. Chris Leibold, second. Any questions on the suspension of Row Four? Roll call.
Adi.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Leibold.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Sleek.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Chris Leibold moves to adopt. Jim Sleek, second. Any further questions or comments? Okay, go ahead.
I have a question for you. Okay. Um, with the milder winters that we have had, um, I know what, what's the, what's the surp, is there a surplus of salt? You know, what, what the prices come down per unit?
I mean, city of Fremont right now, we do have a pretty good supply. Um, in all the years that I've been here, I have seen us go through, you know, eighteen-hundred, two thousand tons, two thousand thirteen, fourteen come to mind. The last two years have been pretty good to us. Um, but you just never know. And as I was talking to the mayor, we had, we, we discussed this too, that, you know, if you run out of salt, that phone is, uh, ringing off the hook. And it's, we've been close before, so to have a surplus is a good thing.
And, and the beaches that you sprayed on the hills and the bridges, how does that compensate for the amount of salt that's wasted?
That actually cuts down the use of salt. Like the little half inch, inch snows that we just have to come in on, they don't come in as much that we hit the main drags, hills, bridge decks, no, and everything, you know, because the stuff's not cheap, but it does do a heck of a job.
So the amount of salt that you want, that you want to contract, that would put us in a surplus for, based on the past few years, what we've used, what we've got in surplus be for what we've used in the past few years?
Okay, so we typically order twelve hundred a ton. This year, we put it down, I believe, to eight hundred. ODAT allows us to go at ninety percent of that or a hundred and ten. We can go up to a hundred and ten, ten percent. Um, so we did use a lower amount this year than what we have in the past just because we have a surplus. But I want people to realize, just because we have a surplus, that doesn't mean we still got to be frugal with it. Um, it's easy to throw it everywhere, but I've also seen us get down to where, I mean, we're like scampering and trying to get through the winter. So, um, I mean, I think we're going to be fine, but I can't, you know, mother nature sometimes surprises.
And Bill, the price is fairly reasonable, it sounds like comparatively speaking. We have plenty of room to store it for access, it keeps it dry and all that.
We have two salt beds, uh, the one down the street apartment and then the one out at the water sewer maintenance. So, yeah, we're, we're in good shape.
The sense of price is low, do we try to get a little bit more?
That was the main reason when we purchased the water sewer maintenance, I think Bob was in on this, uh, meeting, that was one of the things, and Ken Myers was here, I believe, uh, that we had that access, we had another, we had another building to be able to, when the price went down, let's, let's buy it and, and stockpile it and.
But we got plenty of room to get a little more.
Yes, yep. I got actually six hundred ton coming, so.
Okay, roll call.
Elder.
Yes.
Leibold.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Sleek.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Adi.
Yes.
Approved.
Item number two, a resolution authorizing the approval and issuance of a warrant for payment of four thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and zero cents to National Light and Power Incorporated and declaring an emergency.
Yeah, I can talk to this. A few weeks ago, Omni Fiber, that group in town putting the fiber optic lines in, uh, cut through some electric lines and took out half of front street, uh, the Street, the light bulb there. Wasn't entirely their fault, the oops, you know, you have a lot of utilities coming through there, oops and stuff, and if you miss it by a foot, you could hit something, that's how much structure comes to the ground. So, the oops was off a little bit, and they hit a, they hit electric wires, and, you know, honestly, National Light Power did a great job. Billy called them, they were there the next day, and in a day, had it fixed. And so, so it was kind of, we lost a whole street, one side of Front Street for probably three days, didn't have lights down there, and probably wouldn't notice if it went on there, but kind of yearly. It was weird to have lights on one side, not the other side, but it really seemed like, oh, lights make a big difference, it's pretty dark down there. So, I'm sure National Light and Power wants their money, so we're going to spend a little more.
Move the system Row Four.
I'll second.
Spend Row Four, Christine Reese, second. Any other discussion on the suspension of Row Four? Rokoff?
Leibold?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Sleek?
Yes.
Wies?
Yes.
Adi?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Moves to adopt.
Second.
Christine Wies moves to adopt, and Chris Leibold, second. Any other questions or comments, Danny?
Do we then pass that along down the pipe?
This is on us, we, the loop was off.
We are, we are looking into that, I guess, we are looking into that, there's still some discussions on that. I haven't had a chance to, Mr. Phillips, but there's still discussions on that, you know, whether or not we can get rid of this or not. Our insurance companies handle that, but there's no guarantee of work, work.
Anybody else? Rokoff?
Reese?
Yes.
Sleek?
Yes.
Wies?
Yes.
Adi?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Leibold?
Number three, a resolution stating commitment to efforts to reduce roadway deaths and serious injuries with the goal of zero roadway fatalities and serious injuries on or before 2045, and declaring an emergency.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
May I ask, or invite two engineers, our elected county engineer Carlos Vias and our city engineer Tucker Pryor to explain this resolution?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming this evening to explain this.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to talk to this resolution here a little bit with everybody. The city's been presented an opportunity to take part in a conglomerate of counties in northwest Ohio, including cities, townships, you know, counties that are trying to participate in this program. What it basically is, is there's been some funding opportunities that have been presented, kind of short term, we're just finding out about them. And one of the, one of the goals of it is obviously safety. So, as, as the resolution kind of states, you know, to get to zero deaths and serious injuries on our roadway systems is, is the ultimate goal. So, we're developing plans to come up with strategies and improvements to our roadway systems to accomplish that. Part of this is funding that we're going to get through the federal government to, to help us out with that. It's a long program. Carlos and Catherine here, she's also a pool design, that's helping out with the program, she's helping develop that. So, basically what we're doing here is presenting a resolution so that we can participate in the funding application as part of a larger group, so that we're included. One of the projects that is part of this program is West State Street, so that's, that's a great thing for us, being included in that, and have, one of the initial projects that are part of this program is part of the first year. I'll let Carlos give a little of the details, I'm just really learning, and that's why I wanted to have Carlos come along here to explain a little more. But what we would ask is, after the presentation here, that Carlos and Tucker continue and answering the questions, if anyone we have to suspend Row Four and pass this resolution so we can continue forward with the funding application.
Thank you, Catherine.
I'm going to pass this out, you guys. Just a quick look at that, my name is Carlos Vias, I'm a sandusky county engineer, thank you for having me, opportunity to present to you guys. Thank you, Tucker, I have our consultant here, Catherine, who is from two, two design, I have a production, she has about five minutes, she promised me she'll talk to you guys about five minutes. So what we're doing here, guys, is we have a regional, we have a regional plan to improve the, basically the safety of our roadways, and we went together with the Lucas County engineer, the Wood County engineer, the Ottawa County engineer, myself, and also along with the city of Toledo and the city of Sylvania, we've been meeting for about, for about a year. This is called Safe Streets and Roads for All, so what you have in front of you is basically the action plan components that we are putting together in order to apply for this funding. You know, Tucker felt it was important for us to be here today, and that's why we're here, because looking at, obviously you know the Sandusky County engineer, and I'm looking at all the roads in Sandusky County, mainly the county roads, Tucker handles, you know, you guys handle your roads inside the city limits, I don't really get inside the city limits too much, and we do work together on some projects. So when I got initiated in this project, we're looking at the whole entire system, you know, we're looking at is basically, what, what are your, your high injury networks, and what is your, your, the roads that are the most susceptible to high injuries and fatalities? And that's what we're trying to accomplish. So when we narrowed it down, and we're getting towards the end here, so we narrowed it down, came down with a few roads that we're looking at for the first year, and one of those that Tucker mentioned is West State Street. Now, I want you guys to know, West State Street, we don't have a lot of fatalities, and maybe not a whole lot of injuries, but there's a potential for that. And that was, that was something that showed up in the, in the study that we did. That what I would point to is, is we're asking you to pass this resolution today, is the number one thing at the top of the plan, is leadership, commitment, and bold sentence. So if you read that, we're not making this up, this is what the Fed wants, wants us to do. So we're applying for this funding, and this is what they're asking us to do. Number one thing is, we got to pass the resolution, basically trying to accomplish this goal by 2045, that's what we're asking, we're asking council to do. I'll bring, I'll bring Catherine here at this point, and if you guys have any more questions, I think we're done.
Hi, Council President, honored members, thank you for inviting me here tonight. I'm Catherine Fervish, I work for a planning, engineering, and design firm, that, a transportation consulting firm, that has national expertise in transportation safety. As Carlos mentioned, and Tucker mentioned, the four county engineers came together to write a regional safety action plan. This is being funded by the federal Safe Streets and Roads for All planning process, and there's interest in applying for implementation funding. Just a little bit of background, in 2021, more than forty-six thousand people died in traffic crashes in the United States. It's equivalent to a midsize airplane falling out of the sky every day. More than seventy-five hundred of those people, on average, were walking or using mobility device like a wheelchair or cane. These are, more people were killed on our roadways in nineteen eighty-one, since nineteen eighty-one, who were walking. The United States ranks forty-first in worst traffic fatality rates among forty-nine high-income nations, and is at the bottom compared to our peer nations. In this region, in, in Sandusky, Ottawa, Wood, and Lucas Counties, when we look at the average between 2017 and 2021, in these four counties, we saw more than four hundred life-altering injuries and deaths each year. So, you know, in thinking about that, more than once a day, somebody in one of these four counties and everyone they love had their lives changed forever in the simple act of traveling from one place to another. We know that none of you want this, the federal government doesn't want this, this is at an epidemic proportion, and they're making big investments to stop it. So, it's, it's the reason we were hired to help write the plan, and we're helping to support an, an implementation grant. And I'm happy to answer any questions you all have about this.
So those four counties are the four counties that you're working with?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And then you mentioned West State Street, I'm just curious if it's a four county plan, one dollars, if the city of Fremont see out of that? And I know we probably don't know yet, but?
We're getting close, though. Collectively, I think the ask is going to be for about twenty-five million dollars, and we're looking proportionately at how that will be dithered up between the four counties. So we anticipate somewhere around five million dollars being invested in Sandusky County, and that to be really centered in Fremont and the greater Fremont area.
And that's all correct, DOT funding, has already been appropriated, or it's a future?
No, this is an application to ask for it.
I guess my question is, does DOT already have the authority, do you know, does DOT already have the money?
They do.
Okay, that's my question.
The federal, federal.
Federal.
Yeah.
And that's also through that Safe Streets and Roads for All.
So this program has been around for a few years now, and there's, there's been a few cities and communities around the country that have gotten some of this money. We want to get our hands in this.
Sure.
And, and the reason that we, so the Lucas County engineer was kind of, he's kind of the lead, he's, he's got a bigger county, and a bigger budget, we're just kind of going along with him, but knowing that going regionally is going to give us a better opportunity to get it up. So that's why, I don't, I love that five million dollars, don't get me wrong, but I want to make sure that it impacts the whole time, that's what, that's what.
It also really lines up well with your first presentation tonight, that a lot of the conversation around eliminating fatalities and serious injuries really focuses on, like, why these crashes are happening, and who's more likely to die? For example, children, the traffic fatalities are the number two cause of deaths in the United States. Older people are much more likely to die when walking, and, and so oftentimes, that's where we focus. But as I was listening to your team's presentation tonight, the other piece of this is what we get to have, when we create streets that are safe for people who are walking, people who are biking, I saw someone on a skateboard on my way here tonight, people on motorcycles, and for people driving. Like when we create safe places for people, no matter how they travel, we actually create thriving communities. We, you know, we really invest in places like State Street. We invest in people who live in, who may live in affordable housing, being able to get to employment centers, and people with disabilities who may not be able to drive, able to participate fully in community life. And so it's, while in some ways it's about, it's very much about eliminating fatalities and life-altering injuries, it's also about investing in the kinds of communities that people want to live in. And Fremont is, is a beautiful community, and making this type of investment is just going to make it more attractive, not just for the people who are currently living here, but those you want to encourage to come.
I have a question, or a couple of questions.
Sure.
What is the, once you get the money, what are going to be the restrictions, or what can you use it for, the traffic lights, intersections? And what would be the physical, what would you be doing exactly? What have other towns, if they've already had this, been doing? It's more than repaving streets, is it, you know, painting lines for, for crosswalks? What is it, the practical, that we're going to, that we're going to do with this?
Sure. So it would be to look at components of the plan, which, which most of the components that we're looking at for that twenty-five million have to do with touching the roads. In Fremont, we would be working directly with Tucker and with you all on what would happen here. But the, but the focus of dollars that are focused on transportation infrastructure are related to things like, are there, is there, does lighting need to be improved so that it's safer for pedestrians to cross at night, and for those skateboarders? Are there things that we can do to improve the sidewalk conditions? Are there things that we can do to calm the speeds of traffic so that if a crash does happen, that people are much less likely to die? So, things like that. And it would be context sensitive, so if we're, the treatment on a rural road is going to look really different than a treatment in downtown Toledo, which will look very different than something in Bowling Green or Fremont. But that will be working with the communities. The focus is on where fatal and serious injury crashes are currently happening, and on the roads that look like those places. So it's a very data-driven approach. We've actually mapped out all of those places and have put together a plan, recommend, a recommended plan, and that's how we came up with the year 2045. We think all of those roads can be addressed in this four county region between now and 2045. And then there are proven safety countermeasures that the federal government has that help to address the types of crashes that's happening, that are happening in a, in a, in a, in a context here.
So Danny, I know it sounds very general, and I got to his at this point, because we're just asking for the money, we don't have the actual projects like designed and ready to build, obviously, but there's many, many things that we're going to look at, and like, should be touched, there's so many things, as engineers, we're always looking at, where, where are the crashes happening, let's fix that. Where, what's happening, let's try to fix that. You know, that's, as engineers, that's kind of how we look. The federal government is telling us, you got to look at things a lot quicker than that. They want us to be a lot more proactive, they want to look at equity, they want to look at where, where, where all these people can get from place to another, not necessarily where the problem areas is that we can oversee, but where are the problem areas could happen. So, I know it sounds like a lot of general information, and it kind of is, but we do have more than five years to, to make a project happen, and what we're looking at, West State Street is the, is the very first.
Have you identified some other spots?
Yes.
As long as you have to make that list to supply for this grant as well, some ideas?
We do. In Lucas County, the focus is going to be on the Grove Street. Bowling Green, they're still in a conversation, but there's a piece of Dixie Highway that's being looked at. Ottawa County, the conversation is still happening with Ohio Department of Transportation District Two, because there's a roadway that feels like it really makes sense, and so we're in conversations with them. And here in Fremont, we worked with Tucker and looked at the places that really lit up, and it, it looked like State Street made a lot of sense. The other piece of this is, it's a very competitive application, and so we're looking at what is the story we're trying to tell, and with this application, the story we're trying to tell is safe routes for the road crews. So how people, particularly people who may not own, operate, or maintain a car, how do people get from where they live to employment, to address those road forces?
Federal money, who is in charge of saying who gets this money? And how do they determine that you're qualified, or that you can get the grant of money?
The federal highway administration. There's the who, 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 the highway administration.
To determine who's going to get the money?
Who in the?
Yeah. What, in the constitution, that, you know, is it two teachers, or is it, how many, government or?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, the application will include the places that have been identified within this region, so the Grove Street in, in the Toledo-Sylvania area, a location in Bowling Green, a location here in Fremont, which State Street is what we're looking at, and then a location in Ottawa County also. So that will be part of the application process, we'll be working with the, the folks who own those roadways to see what lights up in the high priority network.
The reason I'm asking that question is because I've gone to team of car meetings. The reason I was asking that question is because I've gone to Team Akar meetings, and I've been to the Transportation Committee meetings, and they have all this money, and I perk up, and I think, oh, maybe now we can get something. And when I say now, can Sandusky County and Fremont City get some money? And we're never qualified for it. It's always Wood County, Monroe Street, Ottawa, but never here.
That's the way that it works.
That's what we're doing.
That is why County Engineer Kenuzki in Lucas County wanted to bring the four counties together. He could have gone after this on his own, but was very interested in making sure that everyone is included. So, this application will go in as a group so that it will be won or lost by the whole group.
And we felt we could be a lot more competitive that way versus one community. And that's what the federal government is looking at. Mike is actually going to Washington, D.C., and talk to these folks, the guys that are going to decide who gets this money. And that's what he's finding out. You need to be competitive doing this. You need to be in a regional setting. You need to, you know what I mean? It has to be equity-driven. It has, you know what I mean? So, those are all the things we're looking at.
They can't kick Fremont out of this group.
No.
They, they...
We got to pass this, yeah.
We have to pass the resolution if you want the money.
So, when you say West State Street, what's the parameter? Wait a minute, I'm asking a question. So, what's the parameter of West State Street? Where, what is the length of the grant application? So, that is still being looked at, and we'll work closely with Tucker on that. He'll be the final decision-maker on what those, what that component is.
But in general, we were looking all the way from the river, all the way to, almost to the bypass.
To the city limits.
Basically, no, past the city limits.
Past the city limits. Oh, because it's a county, too.
Yeah, it's a county, too. But that's what the data kind of shows. But obviously, I don't think there's enough money to do all that. It might be more in sections, if you will. But that's the whole length that we're looking at, and identifying what we need to do inside of there.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
So, it's a pretty wide spectrum of what you can do with the funds, from roundabouts to walkways, education. When you submit the application, I know communities that won the previous two funding rounds, they used it for a ton of different things. When you submit the application, are you specifying the application exactly what we're going to do here?
We're specifying the corridors and the likely countermeasures, but the application will include a planning process to actually study and see, did the countermeasures we came up, did the ones we were guessing about, based on the data we had, are those actually the right ones?
So, you identify the locations, but the actual work is pretty general at this point. You know, we got to hone down on that.
So, who's going to decide when the funding gets approved? Who is going to be a part of the planning process of, if we're doing walkways, or bikeways, or roundabouts, or identifying speed things, or, you know, whatever the case may be, who's a part of that process?
It'll be the four county engineers and the people in charge from each of the jurisdictions that will ultimately make the decisions.
Can I come out of my administration in my office with the city?
Okay.
And we'll try to get community input, things like that, you know, as we move forward and that.
I move to suspend Rule Four?
Yes, sir.
Angie Reese is supposed to suspend Rule Four, and I'm not sure. One second.
I'll give it to Jim.
Jim Sleep, second. Any more questions about the suspension of Rule Four?
Sleep? Yes. Wees?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Leibold?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Second.
Chris Leibold, Louis Swedot, Christine Wees, second. Any further questions?
You know, it looks like Carlos is leading. I just want to ask one quick question. It's not a question, it's more of a random comment-type thing. Carlos and I were talking three weeks, or a few years back, and he was telling me, and a lot of people probably don't know, this is going to find it really wild and interesting. How many miles Sandusky County do you take care of?
298 miles.
Everybody know that one? Huh? And how many bridges are in the county?
262 bridges.
Thank you very much.
How many turnbouts?
Too many.
Roundabouts.
He just did one in the doorway.
No, this is a joke. Tucker always tells me the, you know, the county gate, the crappy bridges to the city. And I'm like, no problem, I'll give you State Street, Hayes Avenue Bridge, you know, you can have those back, and I'll take care of your crappy bridges for you.
Now that we fixed them all up, we want to give them back to you.
Yeah, yeah, sure. No, but I love the camaraderie and working together. Tucker and I have a very good relationship, and the mayor, and anytime you guys need something, just call me.
Thanks, Carlos.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos.
Rule call?
Wees?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Leibold?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Sleep?
Yes.
Approved. I don't think we're going to do committee reports or council comments this evening. I don't know if there's anything, Mayor Sanchez, that you need to have addressed this evening.
Just, if I could just say just a few things.
Okay.
So, just first and foremost, I'd like to thank City Council, and Madam President, I'd like to thank you for allowing the presentations to take place tonight. I'd also like to thank the members of the public for joining. Anytime that you are in a leadership position, or you're in any type of trying to, you know, govern a city or lead an organization, you're constantly trying to, you know, do your day-to-day operations and deal with the normal, ordinary, typical business. But I think, hopefully tonight, the council and the public see that, you know, there are a lot of people that are working together in very strategic ways with Beth Hanam being here tonight, and with her being the Norah President, and there's been a lot of economic development collaborations between Sandusky County and even some other county initiatives. And we've been saying this for years, that in order for Fremont or Sandusky County as a, to be competitive with, you know, the Big C, Cincinnati, Columbus, and, you know, the areas of Cleveland and some of these other areas, Northwest Ohio, has to come together to partner up in order to be competitive for these federal dollars. You know, that's the only way that we're going to get these dollars. But even, you know, on a local level, I hope with Shari Miss Mullin's presentation tonight, you see that there's the collaboration. And although everyone is, we're not looking to change what other organizations are doing, we're just looking to align, you know, some of that information. You know, I was sitting here talking to Mrs. or City Treasurer, for those that may not know tonight, that she's, her position here with the city, if you see her or not out. But she's been very great and, you know, asked a lot of questions and helped and partnered with the administration on other initiatives in the city. You know, we were talking about the front door that was talked about with Ms. Stacy Gibson, and I had heard about that, you know, some time ago, but until the community of excellence, I hadn't heard about that. And what we just need to be careful of is that we're doing so many good things that we got to make sure that those good things are getting out to our local churches and our pastors and our community leaders. That way, ultimately, the people that need these services are getting access to those services. So, when we talk about equity and inclusion, those are the things that we're talking about, making sure people have access, but also making sure our organizations are aligned. And some of these buzzwords, they get used in so many different political forums, that you're either for it or you're against it, but the mission is the people. You know, and I think that it's important that we just continue that, and I know that council does a great job of that. It's very interesting to have the presentation here tonight, because I feel like pretty much really on the forefront of a lot of the big things to come to the city. Councilman Leibold and I, we've really worked together really good over the last year or so, and strategically planning this West State Street project, right? With the street levy going down, we still have to look at different ways to meet the needs of trying to get some of our infrastructure fixed. And we work together with our city engineer, and ironically, we've applied for some funding already for West State Street project, so don't be confused tonight. So, in fact, we've received $800,000, and Mr. Kern, who is here tonight, him and I, we've sat down and worked on a lot of these things, too, you know, for economic development purposes and things like that. But when the engineer and I sat down and looked at this, Tucker, I don't know if he's still here or not, there he is. We are looking at, we were already looking at safety features in the city when we make improvements. And the council, the city's already made improvements through downtown, through the railroad, and a lot of these safe walking areas throughout the city. You know, so when you're walking through downtown and in State Street, it's a lot easier to get across, you know, even Front Street now with the signalization and all of the changes. Well, we have already received $800,000. Today, I was on the phone with State Senator Bill Reinecke, lobbying for another million to 1.2 million dollars to get State Street upgraded from state up to Rossin, in collaboration with the work that Mr. Leibold did on his side, you know, with working with the Congresswoman. So, and I feel real optimistic about that. And it's just interesting that we're here tonight. Hopefully, we're going to announce another 1.2 million dollars coming from the state. We just announced $800,000 coming from the feds. But think about what the State Street's going to look like in just a short time, and then they could pick that up from Rossin and go all the way out, you know? So, I think things happen for a reason. The street levy didn't get passed. We're going to continue to apply for these federal dollars, and we're going to keep looking at these things. But the community has to remember, I'm sorry I'm long-winded, Madam President, but the community has to remember that we're not going to get state or federal dollars for these side streets. It's just never going to happen. You know, so when people want their side residential streets paved, you know, I feel like we, as an administration, as a council, as elected officials, I'm saying that all of us, not me, we're doing our jobs to get the dollars here from the state and feds. So, as a community, we have to do our jobs to take care of our local streets. There's not any mismanagement in the city on finances. You know, if, you know, we need to make sure we're doing our part to get those federal dollars here, but at some point in time, I mean, the public's going to have to understand that if we can't get some additional dollars through some type of increase, I saw it today, the city of Sandusky, the city of Port Clinton, all the residents are saying the same thing. I mean, these other cities around us are dealing with the same exact issues. If we're not going to invest into our community internally, it's going to be harder and harder to get the state and the feds to keep giving us the money to do the project. So, I just, I thought I would say that, you know, as we wrap up tonight's meeting, and again, thank you all for listening and being here tonight, to hear what's going on.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to second Mayor, what he said tonight about the streets and how we are going to get them fixed. We have to do it. The government's not going to come in here and take care of our little side streets. So, I agree with Mayor 100%. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam President, I got it. Can I jump in here real quick?
Sure.
So, it's interesting, I wasn't going to share it because the meeting got a little long, but one of the things I like to do is kind of, and I'll make it quick, Danny, is I like to try to see what other communities are going through. And I picked this up, it's the press from the April 8th, and it talks about the city of Oregon, same thing, addressing their streets and hiring of new officers. Their current income tax rate is two and a quarter, and they are proposing to their residents in the fall, a half or a quarter percent to take their income rate, tax income rate percent from two and a quarter to two and a half. And so, there's, you know... Two and a quarter to two and a half. And so, in one aspect, our income tax rate here is 1.5. So, a lot of communities around us that are at two or two and a quarter, you know, it's incredibly affordable here, and so in the one aspect, it's incredibly affordable to live here, in the other aspect, we have not invested in ourselves, as a piggyback to Mayor. And so, what we need to think long and hard is, you know, what do we really want? And when you see a lot of other communities at two, 2%, and two, you know, and then you hear this, and you just sit and watch the news almost every night, and one of these articles will pop up, what issues? So, it's something we, we have to think long and hard, and here, but, you know, residents as well. And so, because it was long-winded, I wasn't going to share that, but it was a great segue from the mayor, and I appreciate that. The only thing I was really going to mention tonight is the concerts that have been at Burchard Park. With the new amphitheater coming, we were uncertain what we were going to do. We had had some feedback on both sides, as far as stay at Burchard Park or moving down here. We, for me, and I know some of you go to those mayor's concerts at Burchard Park, is, you know, you kind of got that feedback. And so, we were, what we kind of decided to do is, we were going to have four concerts at Burchard Park and four concerts at the amphitheater, try to make everybody happy, come to some middle ground. However, we discovered a new problem. All the bands wanted to play at the new amphitheater, and some bands really took exception to, well, I don't know if I'll play. If I, you know, how are you thinking who's going to be at the amphitheater and who's not? And I don't know if I'm going to play. And remember, I'm giving you guys a discount, because we normally charge this much, but because it's a community concert and it's for the public, I'm giving you a discount. And I'm like, okay. And I think, Cody, we and I have had this talk, and then some of the sponsors were like, yeah, I can't wait to hang my banner up at the amphitheater. And we're like, oh, okay. And so, and so, you know, we kind of just quickly came to the conclusion, the concerts that have been at Burchard Park are moving to the amphitheater. And so, I say that tonight because it's being released to the public tomorrow. So, so that you're, and so if you, I'm sure you may get questioned, and we got a lot of people in the public here, that is really the reason why. When it all started, we really struggled, and we tried to do four here and four here, and then we have eight acts scheduled, seven of the eights that I'd want to play at the amphitheater. And the one guy was real nice, well, you know, Bob, I don't mind Burchard Park, you know, I'll do whatever you tell me to do, but I wouldn't mind playing at the amphitheater either. And we're like, okay. So, that's how we came to the conclusion, we're just going to go ahead and move the, Sleepy's one of them, by the way. Yeah, so...
Can you get that concert the same night we have an outdoor council meeting?
Yeah.
There you go.
So, I just wanted to arm you with that information, because it's going live tomorrow, and it gets talked about that it's going to be at the amphitheater. You can kind of explain to folks why that, how it's came about there.
Thank you. Okay. Now, I would ask someone to make the motion.
I'm adjourned.
Jim Sleep, adjourned. Angie Reese, second. Rule call?
Wees?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Leibold?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Sleep?
Yes.